Good morning and welcome to the organizational meeting of the 2024 Pittsburgh City Council, Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. I now call the meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for the public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing no one, the flag would be Counselor Boescherman. So if we could please all stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'll now take a roll call. Counselor Boescherman?
President.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Craigan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here remotely.
Be assumed.
Here remotely.
Yeah. Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here remotely.
Thank you. Counselor Ian Hasinger?
Here.
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
And Counselor Zarella?
Here.
We have 11 members present. Thank you so much. Public forum. The public has been advised to contact the city clerk's office regarding any comment of no more than two minutes, and the following have none have been brought to our attention. I'm going to read the warrant that was posted for this meeting. It was posted December 20th, 2023. Dear Counsel, the organizational meeting of the 2024 City Council will be held Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. The meeting will be open to the public. Person who should participate remotely in the public forum proportion of the meeting may request attendance meeting link by contacting the city clerk's office at cityclerk@fitchburgma.gov. The meeting has been called for the following purposes: oath of offices, election of the council president for 2024, election of the council vice president for 2024, and we'll discuss two orders, the first order being adopting rules of the city council for 2024, and the second order, 2-24, is setting dates of the regular meeting for the fiscal calendar year 2024. That was the warrant. And so now we'll go right into oath of office. So the first one we will be doing is mayorallect. If we could please have Sam- Samuel Elm-Squallia come up to the front, and we can swear you into oath of office. We'll go right up front. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
Aye.
To Elm-Squallia?
Samantha Elm-Squallia.
Do solemnly promise and swear.
Do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Into the best of my knowledge and ability?
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge?
Perform and discharge?
All duties incumbent?
All duties incumbent?
Accommodate as the mayor?
Accommodate as the mayor?
In accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
In accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And the city of Pittsburgh?
And the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
and James Walsh. Do you please come up front here? I will swear on my word.
Thank you.
So if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
Aye.
State your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly promise and swear?
Do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability?
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all duties?
Perform and discharge all duties.
Accommodate upon me?
Accommodate upon me.
As a school committee member?
As a school committee member.
In accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth?
In accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the city of Pittsburgh?
And the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. So, okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Lindsey, nice to meet you. So get in touch. I'd love to just add to my E-list.
Of course.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, yes, I call your names and council. If you could please stand up. Counselor Paul Boescherman, Counselor Andy Kuchar, Counselor Sally Craigan, Counselor Derek Cruz, Counselor Marcus Deena Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Ian Hasinger, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Aye, Nancy Zarella.
Do solemnly promise and swear?
Do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability?
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all duties?
Perform and discharge all duties.
Accommodate upon me as a city counselor?
Accommodate upon me as a city counselor.
In accordance with the laws of?
In accordance with the laws of?
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of Pittsburgh?
And the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God.
Congratulations to you. the floor for nominations of the office of council president.
Nomination?
May I have nominations? Anthony Zarella was by Counselor Ian Hasinger.
Second.
Thank you.
Move nominations, we close?
I'm making a nomination for Amy Green.
Counselor president.
Oh, sorry, for president. Closed nominations.
Okay, nominations have been closed. We'll take a roll call vote. And that will start with Counselor Boescherman.
Definitely, Anthony.
Thank you. That's a yes. Counselor Kuchar?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Craigan?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Cruz?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Fleming?
Counselor Zarella. Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Green?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Schultz?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Ian Hasinger?
Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Walsh?
Counselor Zarella.
And Counselor Zarella.
I will accept.
Thank you. So that's 11 members in favor of Counselor Zarella becoming again the president of council. Congratulations. So with that, I will retire and give the meeting over to President Zarella.
I will now open nominations for the office of council vice president.
Mr. Chair, I nominate the gentleman from Ward 4, Counselor Andrew Van Hasinger.
I second that.
All right, I have Counselor Van Hasinger.
Mr. President, nominate Amy Green.
I have a nomination for Counselor Green.
I'll second that.
Any further nominations?
Move nominations, we close?
Second.
I have my hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Schultz, go ahead.
Is it, am I able to speak in support of someone before the nominations are closed?
We traditionally have not.
Okay, so I can't do that. Okay, thank you. I'll do it afterwards. I'll leave my hand up.
All right, thank you. I have a motion to close nominations. Any objection? Seeing none, nominations are closed. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll for the vice presidential election.
Counselor Boescherman?
Counselor Andy Van Hasinger.
Counselor Kuchar?
Counselor Green.
Counselor Craigan?
Counselor Green.
Counselor Cruz?
Counselor Van Hasinger.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Counselor Green.
Counselor Fleming?
Counselor Green.
Counselor Green.
Counselor Green.
Counselor Schultz?
Counselor Van Hasinger.
Counselor Van Hasinger.
Van Hasinger.
Counselor Walsh?
Counselor Van Hasinger.
And President Zarella?
Comes down to me. Um.
Counselor Ian Hasinger, six. Counselor Green, five. Counselor Ian Hasinger, has the.
All right, our next order of business is Order 124, adopting the rules of the city council for year 2024. We have before us three recommended rule changes, all of which I submitted. They all pertain to public comment and are all intended simply to streamline the process. The first is to amend rule, or rather, I suppose, replace Rule 2.4. I'm not going to read out the entire text unless anyone wants me to, but the idea is simply that rather than having everyone just come up to the podium one at a time, everyone will sign in on a sign-in sheet at the back indicating their pertinent information, which item they wish to speak on, and so forth, so that we can have an idea from the get-go of who wants to speak and on what, and that will then play into the next two rules really as well.
Mr. President?
Counselor Boescherman.
On that rule change, I'm also asking on that rule change that when they come up to the podium and they do speak, if they can spell out their names so the clerk and I, whoever's ever reading it, will get their names correctly spelled?
So that's actually one of the benefits of having a sign-in sheet, is they'll be writing their names.
I understand that, sir, but sometime if they write like me, you can't understand that they're writing.
I will, I think the sheet will indicate to print their names, but I, but yes, I'll try and bear that in mind when they come forward.
Okay.
Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also suggest that if someone forgets or is unaware of that and doesn't realize it, they're still allowed to speak at the end of the?
There is a provision that says that at the discretion of the chair, someone who has not signed in may be permitted to speak.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Mr. President, when you say discretion of the chair, is that saying to me or to the public that if I feel like having you speak, I can't, are there still going to be a lot? I want to make sure that everybody's allowed to speak if they don't sign in or not.
So basically, the idea, the thought is that, yes, everyone who wants to speak would be allowed to speak. The reason it's left to the discretion of the chair is simply to prevent a scenario where people just don't bother to sign in and feel like, well, you know, I'll just jump in when I want to. But if there is someone who forgot to sign in or who wasn't there in time to sign in, yes, the thought is certainly that they would be permitted to speak. And I believe I have Counselor Schultz waiting to speak as well.
Yeah, one thing I thought we might be able to add that we previously had was a street address, so it'd make it easier for the councils to contact the person afterwards, knowing their street address in Pittsburgh.
I am open to that idea.
What do you say, Counsel?
Street address. We had initially removed that after receiving several requests from people who didn't feel comfortable providing it. I have no strong feelings one way or the other on that item, so if there is a motion to amend, Counselor Green?
I think that maybe that should be in a column, maybe optional, as an optional. If they'd like to provide it, great, but not obligated to provide it.
Oh, I disagree.
Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you. I do want to have to draw the attention to the counselors that might be in opposition to leaving it an option, is that there might be a legal significance into why somebody doesn't want to disclose their address, either through a restraining order or something like that, where, you know, the court has blocked their address. That could become a very complicated issue for somebody because it would be public record and they would be putting their address on record.
I saw Counselor Fleming's hand up.
Yeah, I think you do have to provide your address for almost every meeting that we have that in the city that's public. You do have to provide your address. I don't know why we would not do that in this particular case. And most people that have their addresses unlisted would not be coming out in public to speak anyhow. They would be writing a letter.
And Counselor Schultz, is your hand intent, is that a new hand or?
No, that's the old hand. I should have lowered it, but I still think we should have them put the address down. You know, they can, you know, if there's some reason why they can't do it, then, you know, that would be fine, but I think we should probably, you know, for most people. Thank you.
All right, so would someone like to make a motion on this amendment, on this proposed amendment to the rule proposal?
I make a motion that they say their address.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I am personally quite sympathetic to the legal issues raised, and I would encourage that it remain optional, but we have the proposed amendment before the council. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And in opposition, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven in opposition. So the amendment fails by a vote of four to seven. The proposed rule itself is still before the council. Any further, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Ian Hasinger?
I just had some concern about the last, the end of the first sentence in the first paragraph, where it's requested that the person speaking state whether they intend to speak in support, in opposition, or to seek information. Not everybody's comments may fall into one of those three buckets. There may be some aspects of agenda items they wish to support, some which they wish to not support or propose to change. So I would advocate that we strike that section to leave it a little more ambiguous and give the flexibility of the public speaker to state their case in their speak.
So I don't have a huge problem with that. The reason for the inclusion of that was so that in scenarios where we have many people interested in a single item, we can attempt to alternate between supporters and opposition in case we do. This is then relating to the next proposed rule change, so that if we're on a time limit of any sort, we make sure that both sides have the opportunity to be heard. But Counselor Walsh?
Counselor Zarella, I would, I'm wondering if maybe they could just, if there was a provision where they just state the nature of their comment. And that way, it kind of leaves it open to include what Counselor Van Hasinger's concerns, and it doesn't limit them to one side or the other.
Makes sense. Counselor Fleming?
I just, I'm still confused about the address thing. Is nothing in Robert's rules that says that they need to say their address?
So council rules supersede Robert's rules, and we did already vote on that item. So I'd be happy to discuss it with you further afterwards, but the council has made its decision on that particular portion of this. Do I have a motion to amend the final sentence to read agenda item of interest and the nature of their interest in that item? So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and seconds. All in favor? I'm sorry, Counselor Fleming, on the motion?
I'm not understanding what we're doing here. Can you re-explain it? I must have misheard something.
The last sentence of the first paragraph of the proposed new rule says that they have to indicate whether they intend to speak in support, in opposition, or seeking information. And it's been pointed out that some people's comments may not fall neatly into one of those categories. So we now have a motion in front of us to amend that, to simply require them to state the nature of their interest.
Okay. I don't know why they have to do any of the above, but?
I know.
Counselor Deena Tally?
I agree with Counsel Fleming. I don't know why this is even necessary. I really, I mean, this is like a rabbit hole we keep going further into. How much more information would we ask someone to speak before us for two minutes? I mean, 18 years I've been doing this, I don't understand. What is the catalyst for why we're requiring this?
Just streamlining.
I don't think it's streamlining. I think it's making it more complicated. You're asking people to fill out more things, state more information before they can speak. What if they change their mind? What if they have different things they have to say that they didn't put on paper?
That would be fine.
I think we should just leave it alone. I don't know why we're going down this, down this road. I don't.
Counselor Craigan?
Sure. Yeah, I'll speak on behalf of this because this is something I brought forward. It really is to help the people who come here focus their attention on why they're here. And so it means they get to look at the, they get to look at the agenda, they get to note what the item is. I think I agree with Counselor Walsh in terms of, you know, you're speaking on the matter versus speaking on any particular side, but it's a way of focusing attention and being more mindful as a citizen representing yourself in a public forum. I don't think it'll take more time. I think that having people sign in also gives them a sense of officially being here. I have been to many other public meetings in other communities where the sign-in is just, you know, a matter of course. I try to get here early to say hello to people who are in the room and, if possible, find out why they're here. I did the same when I was on school committee for many years. And it's just, it's a way of creating community. It's really as simple as that.
Counselor Fleming?
I have a problem with people signing in, but it should end there. It should end there. You don't need to know every aspect of why they're there. They'd speak, let them speak, and be free about speaking. You don't need to know beforehand what they're going to speak about, this, that, and the other year. You just, you're asking too much of these people. People will stop coming to the meetings unless that's what we're trying to do. I don't get it. I yield the floor.
Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I tend to fall more in line with the gentle lady from Ward 5 and the gentleman from Mount Indemn Road on this one. For, it's, we're getting very close to infringing on some civil rights, and I was going to talk more about that in the second rule coming up next. Putting names on paper is one thing. Guiding their, what they say, and cutting off their time is completely different, and I think it violates their amendment rights, their First Amendment rights. I'm very, very against that, and I'm not in favor. I yield the floor. Thank you.
So just to clarify, if someone, again, I'm open to amending this portion of it certainly, but if someone were to note that they were intending to speak in favor, and then when they got to the podium, they decided they wanted to speak in opposition or whatever, they wouldn't, the intent is not to hold them to what they wrote. The intent is simply to give us more information for the sake of being able to organize the public comment section better. But I appreciate the issue. And, yes, I saw your hand. Okay, thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I, the rewording of that last paragraph, I kind of have a problem with because we have a lot of people that come forward in public forum and they just, they have their own agenda, and they start talking about things they want to talk about. And I don't know if, you know, I didn't have a problem with speaking in support or opposition or seeking information, but I don't have a problem either with not having this, this whole, this whole amendment made. I don't think, I think it's really, it's, you know, I think you've done a good job as council president, Zarella, Anthony, to, to, you know, limit and try to get people to stick to what, what they're supposed to be talking about as far as their agenda is concerned. So I don't have a problem with either getting rid of all of this or amending that last sentence because, you know, if you say state nature of their interest, their interest could be something that's not on the agenda. So that's, that's my take on that. I yield the floor.
All right, let's see. I haven't been keeping track of who's spoken how many times yet, so I apologize if I go back to people too quickly or too late. But Counselor Deena Tally?
Thank you. I think the intentions are, I'm not disagreeing with the intent. I, I think in my experience, the more information we seek, it will lead to more complications. I just, based on my own experience on that. I'm not against a sign-in sheet. I'm not against, you know, we have a lot of rules in place already as a council to rein in that section of the meeting with time limits, with germane to the subject matter or the agenda. Obviously, if there's nothing on the agenda pertaining to what that individual wants to speak, we would, we would tell them that. And I know that a sign-in sheet may prevent some of that, but then if the president or the chair is given that sign-in sheet with the stated reason they're there, the meeting's already started. So you can't look at the sheet and look at the person and, and pick them out and say, you can't come up here. They come up and state what they want to speak about, and then we politely tell them that, per our rules, it's not germane to the, to the agenda. And 100% of the time, members of the public where that's happened to, they've been completely understanding of that. They didn't know, and everything's fine. So I, I don't think we need to go deeper than, I think a sign-in sheet's a good idea. You know, name, address, contact info, address and contact, to me, optional. I think we said before, you know, state your city of residence, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And I think, other than the sign-up sheet, with that information that we've already asked for, some of it being optional, that's enough. I don't think we need to go into why they're here. If they're here for a reason other than what we're going to speak about, we kindly tell them right there. And like I said, every single time, they've been very, okay, maybe not? And like I said, every single time, they've been very, okay, maybe not, maybe in a rare case, but I don't recall one, they've been accepting of that, and they've been apologetic, and no harm, no foul. So I really, I understand the intentions. I just, I don't think we need to go down that road. I haven't seen a reason for us to go that more of a distance than, than, than what's warranted. So I'm in favor of the sign-up sheet, and I'm in favor of the information initially asked for to be optional. And that's where it ends for me. I don't think anything, I think anything else is overkill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Van Hazinga?
I have no problem with the sign-up sheet. I think it makes an orderly process to the public comment. I do think it should just be simple. I think we should just eliminate the last portion of the sentence and just have people sign up with their name and address and agenda item, and just leave it at that. I think it's cleaner and simpler.
I'll motion for that.
All right, so can I suggest that the motion also includes striking the second clause of the third paragraph? Oh, yes, we already, thank you. We already do have a motion on the table. We'll circle back.
Can I amend my motion as the motioner?
So you are not the first one to make the motion?
Oh, I wasn't. Oh, I thought I was.
No, we had, we had a motion first to amend the final clause of the first paragraph.
I would withdraw that motion.
Okay, that motion is withdrawn. Now we have the motion from Councilor...
I will, I will motion to strike that last sentence and also add on to what you suggested, Mr. President, as a second part of that. I don't recall exactly...
Thank you. So if everyone has the text in front of them, this would be the final clause of the first paragraph would be stricken, and the final clause of the third paragraph that says alternating when possible between persons in support and persons in opposition. Those would both be stricken. And for the record, I am in favor of this amendment. I am persuaded by my colleagues' concerns.
Mr. President?
Councilor Boesman?
I want to make sure I understand it. So Boesman comes up to the, if my fellow counsel to the right is for, and Boesman comes up from the audience and he's against, why can't I say I'm, after I hear the debate, come up and say, I'm against your proposal? And here's the reasons why. Here's the, I can give it to you in black and white, and so I'm better.
So you can. That, that would be the intent of this amendment, would be to just remove any, any requirement that you kind of pre-register that. You would be able to speak in support, in opposition, however you see fit, when you approach the podium.
Okay, all right, all right, I, I can, I understand now.
All right. All in favor of this amendment? In opposition? It, the amendment passes unanimously. The rule as amended is before the council.
Motion to adopt the rule as amended.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Councilor Boesman?
Yes.
Councilor Kucher?
Yes.
Councilor Kregan?
Yes.
Councilor Cruz?
Yes.
Councilor DiNatali?
Yes.
Councilor Fleming?
Yes. Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
And Councilor Zerola?
Yes.
President Zerola, sorry.
No problem.
That passes 11 to 0.
All right. The next one, Rule 2.4A, this is allowing the chair, chair rather than president, because it would apply equally to committee meetings, if desired, to set a time limit on the totality of public comment in the event that it appears that it will go for an unreasonable duration.
Mr. President?
Councilor Boesman?
I remember one year, I think Councilor DiNatali was on here, and they were talking about Planned Parenthood, and people came out of their way to come down here to talk. So if you're saying 30 minutes, you're taking people's rights away from government to give their expression about government. That meeting went on to after 12 o'clock that day, because I watched it, and I was one of the guys that was going to come down here at 12 o'clock and give my opinion, why you shouldn't be on Main Street and why you should be on Main Street. So I think you're limiting people's rights to come out and be participation of our former government, and I'm a pro advocate of being involved in government. And when you start saying, we're only going to talk about this for 30 minutes, if it goes longer than 30 minutes, we're going to shut it all off to the public, I don't think it's fair to them. I mean, they have a right to speak for their government, and they are the government, and we should be listening to what they say. So I'm in favor of that amendment that you're making. I think if it goes to past midnight, that's what we're here for, to listen to what they say.
So I see two other counselors, three other counselors are waiting to speak. I will just note that, first of all, we can't go past midnight. It would be an open meeting law violation, because we would not be meeting on the posted date anymore. And that's part of the issue, is we want to hear from members of the public, but ultimately, we are here to do the business of the city. And if we can't get to that business, because we're spending two hours, three hours, hearing people saying, honestly, when it's issues like that, it's often people saying the same thing over and over, the, to me at least, the purpose of public comment is to inform the vote that we will later take. Not, you know, not for people to broadcast their opinions on TV, but to inform the council so that we can then take a better informed vote later in the evening. If we can't get to that vote, because we're spending two or three hours in public comment, that's no longer serving the purpose. There is, there is no mandate that there be public comment at all. That actually surprises some people, but there isn't. And many other municipalities do have aggregate time limits on their public comment sessions. It doesn't have to be 30 minutes. I spoke with Councilor Van Hazinga this morning, and we agreed it could, we could amend to make it longer than a 30-minute minimum. But I do feel strongly that there should be some limit, because on any given issue, you reach a point where hearing more people voicing the same opinions has diminishing returns in terms of value to our decision-making process, as distinct from, say, one person speaking and saying, I have the signatures of 30 other people in the gallery here who agree with me, or something like that. Councilor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do believe that this is well-intentioned, and that we do need order in some, some rules, otherwise we'd have people come in reading dictionaries and just filibustering and causing, causing havoc. So I do know that we need, you know, the two-minute time limit, but I, I feel like it's been working well. And when people are passionate about something, something's important to them, it's their civil right to be able to come here and voice that opinion. It doesn't matter, for me, it doesn't matter how many times we hear the same opinion. That is their right, and it's something I am, I'm dead-set against, against taking away from them. And I don't know if that's legal trouble for us down the road, but, I mean, if we're here till midnight and we had to close it out because we had 1,000 passionate residents in here, I think that would be amazing. That'd be incredible. And I'm, I'm against preventing that and having someone come down and take time from their lives and not get to speak because they didn't get here in time, because they didn't get the time limit. So I will not be voting in favor of this, and I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Fleming?
Yes, I agree with both councils that spoke prior to me. I think we are just trying to silence people more and more. I understand we have timelines that we have to, we have to meet, but you know what? These people elected us to be in this position. The last thing I'm going to tell them is, no, you cannot speak because we've met our time limit, so you can't speak. I don't think that's fair to us, and I don't think it's fair to them. They're the taxpayer, and they're paying for us to be in this position. We need to hear everything that everybody has to say. My failing. I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilor Van Hazinga?
I think public comment is a very good and useful thing, and I think it's very important that people have the opportunity to speak to the council, to let us know their, their opinions and feelings on the matter. However, I do understand the need to have some sort of limit, because there is a potential for it to obstruct the council from actually doing its business. But I can't support a petition that only has 30 minutes. I think that's unrealistically short timeframe. If it was an hour, two hours, or some period of time where any reasonable number of people would have the opportunity to speak to the council, I would support that. But it's present format, I would not.
Councilor DiNatali?
So I can count on one hand, in my 18 years, when we had a public comment period that went longer than two hours. One of the times was what my colleague from Ward Two mentioned. The other four instances, I can actually name them. South Fitchburg School closing in 2006, City Hall renovation project, One Way Main Street experiment, and the, the zoning change ordinance for the game on Fitchburg. Those are the only five instances I recall we had a meeting that went well after midnight, because it was about a two- to three-hour public comment period, where there were 60 to 100 people that showed up. Now, if you do the math for two hours, and you limit everybody to two minutes, it's 60 people. I mean, we are lucky on a given meeting to have 10 people show up. But there is going to be an issue here and there that will bring 50, 70, 80, over 100 people. And for a rule change like this, it doesn't account for those instances. So I guess what I would say to my colleagues is, if they are amenable to having a time limit, there should be an amendment in there that states that, at the discretion of the chair, that limit may be extended. If, if, I am not, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, the limit, whether, whether we leave it at 30 minutes or, as Councilor Van Hazinga suggested, extend it to an hour or two hours, it's a minimum. The chair always has the discretion to let it go longer. It's just it can't be shorter.
Okay, so, so then, to your, to that point, Mr. President, I almost then find this to be redundant, then. If it's always at the discretion of the chair to prolong the public comment, I don't really know why we have a time limit at all, then. I mean, it's, it's a case-by-case basis. You got to read the room, you got to read the pulse. You know this better than anybody. On an instance like those five that I mentioned, especially if people are upset or passionate, you don't want to cut people off. Even, and people, I understand people, when we tell them, if you've got 70 people in the room and they all agree on the same thing, can we only have like five of you speak? People don't like that. They want to speak. They don't care if they're being repetitive. They want to go home saying to themselves, I said something, and I want the counselors to hear 80 of us say the same thing, because I want it drilled into their brains how we feel. I don't want one, unless the public shows up and appoints a spokesperson, which happens sometimes, I'm here to speak on behalf of 50 people, fine, but if 50 people want to say the same thing, I think that's what they want. They want us to keep hearing the same thing over and over again. So in those rare instances, again, I just don't see the necessity to have a time limit. We, we, I don't see the reason for it. In those rare instances where we don't, where we would maybe need one, it's for a specific subject that really warrants a lot of time. And if we have to stay one, two, or three meetings out of two years past 11 or 12 o'clock, so be it. I recall during budget hearings in 2009, the council had five-hour meetings, budget meetings, and they would go well after midnight. We would have to hold, we had to hold meetings that year on two Saturdays in the morning. None of us complained, obviously. It was part of the job. But my, my point is that we'll get through this, whether the public comment takes 30 minutes or three hours. And how often does it take that long? Almost never. So in the rare instances that it does, we'll just weather the storm. I don't, I don't really see, again, tensions are well, well-intended here, but I just don't see the need for it. Especially if the chair has the sole discretion to prolong past that time limit anyway. I don't really see the need for it. That's it. So I'm going to vote against any time restriction. Thank you.
Fair enough. It seems like the general sentiment of the council is in opposition, and, to be honest, I don't feel all that strongly about this rule proposal anyway. It is more just a product of thinking through what could happen and what might be necessary at some point. But I agree that, in practice, it, it hasn't happened in my time on the council. So I am willing to withdraw my proposal for 2.4A, if there is no objection to doing that. Seeing none? All right, we'll move on. The last one, 2.4B, although I'll be, if, if the council is in favor of this, I'll be requesting that we amend it to 2.4A, to keep it in order. The last one simply says that, at the discretion of the chair, public comment on one or more particular agenda items can be held until immediately prior to those agenda items. This is so that, you know, an example would be the recent debates on the flag, or the fluoridation, or something, where we had appointees waiting for the Appointments Committee report to be read, and they were sitting here for 30 minutes or so through public comment, whereas we could have, in theory, said, all right, if you're here to speak on agenda item X, please hold your comment, and you'll be given a chance to speak before we debate it. Councilor DiNatali?
Yeah, I like this idea, only because, well, for the regular city council meetings, I think having the public comment up front altogether for anything on the agenda makes more sense because of the format. But in committee meetings, planning board, zoning board, you see it on the zoning board, the planning board, conservation commission, when they have an agenda item spoken on, they allow people to speak right there. And it keeps it fresh. It's all the same subject. As chair of the Finance Committee, you know, I also prefer to do it that way, too, and that's why I like this rule change, in that, instead of asking for public comment at the front, well, someone may be here waiting to speak on the last item on the agenda, and if they speak right at the beginning of the meeting, and then an hour passes, and then their agenda gets picked up, sometimes some of us may have lost sight of what was said an hour or two ago, so it keeps it more fresh. So I like to have that discretion. If I'm chair of anything, or if any of us are chair of anything, I'm sure we all like that discretion. So I would support this amendment, with that caveat. Thank you.
Councilor Kregan?
Sure, I'd like to just express my agreement with Councilor DiNatali, because when we do side yard sales as part of city property, if we do not have the comments immediately before the side yard, and we may have half a dozen side yards, the confusion possibilities are enormous, because we're dealing with multiple pieces of paper, multiple speakers, and multiple comments. So I, I found that, and Leavenster City Council also does comment, item, comment, item, and that moves things right along. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the amendment as amended?
Can I ask first for a motion to amend it to Rule 2.4A?
Go B.
Any objections to that amendment?
No.
Seeing none? All right, now the, now the item itself.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
The item as amended?
I have a motion and second to add Rule Point 2.4, Rule 2.4A, that being the final one on the list. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Councilor Boesman?
Yes.
Councilor Kucher?
Yes.
Councilor Kregan?
Yes.
Councilor Cruz?
Yes.
Councilor DiNatali?
Yes.
Councilor Fleming?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zerola?
Yes.
It passes 11 to 0.
All right. And now, if I could have a motion to adopt the rules of the city council as amended?
So moved.
I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Passes unanimously. Order 2-24, setting the dates of regular meetings of the city council for the year 2024, as listed on the enclosed sheet. Any questions or comments from counselors? Can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the proposed calendar. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none?